Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. This is the 2019 San Bruno Candidate Forum. My name is Melissa Thurman. I'm the City Clerk for the City of San Bruno. And I am here to welcome you all for tonight's event. And I would like to introduce the League of Women Voters, who are going to be managing this tonight. And I'm going to pass the torch now to Margie Gater, who is the moderator for the League of Women Voters.
Thank you, Melissa. Hello and welcome. First announcement is make sure your cellphones are off or on silent, please. Thank you. So that no candidate is interrupted. Just a reminder, there's no campaign literature, clothing, or other material allowed in this room. We like to keep a nice neutral atmosphere here while we do our candidate forums. My name is Margie Gater, and I'm the Voter Services Director, co-director of the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County. I want to thank the City of San Bruno for sponsoring this forum tonight. We appreciate their interest and efforts in presenting events like these that increase voters' knowledge about the candidates and the issues. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan volunteer organization of men, women, and men. Our education mission is to encourage your active and informed participation in government at every level. The League does not endorse candidates or political parties. Our sole interest is in helping voters gain fair and unbiased election in order to make an informed decision on or before Election Day. The purpose of this candidate forum is to provide an opportunity for all the candidates to be heard at one time and to be questioned by you, the audience. Bringing the candidates and voters together face-to-face enables voters to be better informed about their decisions on Election Day. Thank you for coming out to learn more about the candidates and ask them questions. We love questions. That's what makes this engine run. Tonight, you will hear from the candidates for the San Bruno City Council. There are four candidates for two seats. The term of office is four years. Again, this event is a nonpartisan setting for voters to hear all the candidates. It's not for the supporters or opponents of any particular candidate in the audience to demonstrate his or her views or preferences. So keep any expressions of disdain or delight to yourselves for now, please. We'll thank all the candidates at the end of the forum. The candidates, in alphabetical order, are Stephen Marshall, Linda Mason, Marty Medina, and Irene O'Connell. And here are the ground rules, which were sent to the candidates, obviously, ahead of this forum. They will have opening statements. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. Then we'll have a question period. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. All the candidates will have equal time to speak to the question, even if the question is not addressed, even if the question is directed to a specific candidate. And then we'll have closing statements. We will have two minutes for a closing statement. Our timekeeper is Jean. She's down here in front, so the candidates can see her. She's got signs for time, so we can keep track. She'll give the warning of a minute and 30 seconds. And then she has a stop sign. And you can finish your sentence, but please don't go on for another paragraph. Our ushers are Kathy and Karen. They're wandering around with note cards and pencils. If you have a question, do you like these gentlemen are doing? And just raise your hand, and they will come take them. If you need a card or pencil, just wave your hand, and they will come to you, so you can write your questions. Please try to write a little large and legibly. And try to keep your questions as pithy as you can. All questions come to me, the moderator, and I will sort the questions by subject, and we'll cover a variety of topics. We rarely have time to ask every single question. I have been looking through them as they've been coming in. I have a lot of great questions. So I may not get to them all, or I'll combine or rephrase some of the questions. So you may not hear yours exactly as written, but I may rephrase it a little. The candidates have drawn lots to determine the order for which they will speak. Each candidate has three minutes for the opening statement. And our first candidate is Stephen Marshall.
Just jump right in?
Jump right in.
Okay. So I first learned about the power of democracy when I was just eight years old. Our family was having dinner, and my dad, who was mayor of San Bruno at the time, was discussing the upcoming council meeting agenda. The hot item of the time was whether fireworks would be outlawed or not. Dad said it was going to be a close vote, so I begged him to convince the other council members to keep fireworks legal. It was my mom who turned to me and asserted, "Stephen, if you feel that strongly about this issue, then go to the meeting and state your case." So when my name was called at the next city council meeting, I marched down the aisle, pleaded my case, and changed the vote of only one council member. But that's all I needed to keep fireworks legal in San Bruno. So thank you, Mom, for teaching me and introducing me to democracy in action. And thank you to the League of Women Voters tonight for hosting this event. Why am I running? The answer is simple. I'm running because it's the right thing to do, and this is the right time to do it. San Bruno is the only home I've known. I grew up here. I went to school here. I was raised by this San Bruno village. And I'm raising my children here. So giving back to a community that has given so much to me is the right thing to do. We have so much to be proud of and a few challenges to face. Let me briefly highlight four key issues. Enhancing public safety. Communities thrive when people feel safe. Yet, in a recent meeting with our police chief, he pointed out that although San Bruno is a small town, we have big-city problems. Recent shootings at YouTube and Tan Fran and a growing homeless problem shows this. We need to make more progress in these areas. I served as board president of Star Vista, one of San Mateo County's largest nonprofits that deals with a lot of these issues. As council member, I seek to partner with agencies like this to help those in need navigate life's challenges. Youth services. As a father of three girls, I know how important outside activities are in today's addictive game and cellphone culture. As former board chair of San Bruno's Park and Rec Commission and former president of St. Robert's School Board, I look forward to sharing what I've learned in these roles with my fellow council members so we can meet the needs of our children. Senior services. My dad told me that his proudest accomplishment as mayor was seeing this San Bruno senior center built. I recently had the opportunity to tour the center and was delighted to see how well staff are running this heavily-used facility. Demographics are destiny, so we must make sure maintenance continues to be a top priority. Finally, strengthening our infrastructure. I had the opportunity to sit with our city manager. And it's clear that we must make difficult decisions regarding our cable TV, numerous new developments, and the lack of a downtown development plan. These are just a few of the infrastructure challenges we face. I have built my business by conquering challenges, creating relationships, and having strong negotiation skills. The time has come to create a vision and strategy that builds on our past and directs us toward a future that serves this great community. I look forward to fostering relationships with property owners, business owners, and developers. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. And our next candidate opening statement is Linda Mason.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. First of all, just a thank you for the League of Women Voters, for the public who are present and engaged in this election, and to my family, my husband, my children, and who I always call my eternal babysitters, my parents, who are watching our kids tonight. A little about myself. My husband and I moved to San Bruno when I was pregnant with our first son. To say the least, we have fallen in love with the city with a heart. We are proud to live here and are excited for what the future holds. I'm an attorney in the public sector, where I love working on policy that houses the homeless and provide guidance to the daily legal issues of a large organization. This election is a pivotal election to the future of San Bruno and our quality of life here. Whether you live in Crestmore and may be impacted by the potential sale of the fields that could be home to 300-plus new single-family homes, or you live near Mills Park, where you will be impacted by the Mills Plaza Development, currently slated at 425 units, or the Bay Hill Specific Plan, currently slated at 500-plus units, or the reconstruction of the Allen School, or all three, or you live near the Golf Driving Range, or Engvall, that may be sold or leased in the coming years for something yet to be determined. You will be impacted. These are a handful of developments that I mentioned today out of many more. These will be decided by two of the people that are up here tonight. As you can see, we have a lot of change coming. Our hard-earned money goes towards paying city council members up to $2,756 per month via stipend, medical, and CalPERS retirement contributions. The purpose of this comment is not to question the amount that is paid, but to question whether the amount we are all paying is worth the services and contributions that we are receiving. So tonight, as you listen to all of us speak and until you vote, I ask you to take this away with you. Friendships aside, loyalties put away, history's on hold. Have I gotten a return on my investment? If not, is it time to diversify my investment? Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Irene O'Connell.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for bringing tonight's forum to the voters of San Bruno. And thanks to all of you here and watching at home in your interest in San Bruno's future. Boning is one of our most precious rights as citizens. I appreciate you taking the time to become informed about what each candidate would offer as you consider who you want representing you on the San Bruno City Council. I want to thank the voters of San Bruno for their past and continued support. I was born and raised on the east side of San Bruno. I grew up in a home where my dad was extensively involved in civic matters, and my mother was engaged in art, culture, and education. Because of them, I developed my love of learning, of the arts, and my passion for San Bruno. I am totally a hometown girl. I attended Bel Air Elementary, Parkside Intermediate, and Crestmore High School. My first real job was as a swimming instructor at our San Bruno Park pool. I pursued a teaching career, earning a bachelor's degree in liberal studies, a master's degree in elementary education, and a lifelong elementary education credential from San Francisco State University. I taught sixth grade at St. Veronica's School in South City for many years and became their school librarian. San Bruno has always been home to me and my husband and the place where we chose to raise our three children. During my time as a teacher and working mom, I developed my ability for finding and implementing answers to problems, both large and small. As a council member, I've honed my ability to work collaboratively, not just here in San Bruno, but regionally as well. I know what it means to listen to all the voices and to seek solutions that best serve the city as a whole. I formed and chair the San Bruno Library Foundation, a nonprofit organization that promotes the building of a new library community center. I created the Culture and Arts Commission and the Beautification Task Force that runs Operation Clean Sweep. And I persuaded a majority of the city council to build a park on Florida Avenue on the east side of El Camino. It will be the first park built in San Bruno in decades. I also volunteer on San Bruno Park School District's Big Lift Collaborative, committed to every child reading proficiently by grade three. At the county level, I have long worked to find solutions to tough regional and local problems that impact San Bruno residents. I'm the chair of the nationally-recognized, award-winning, life-support joint powers authority that keeps trained paramedics on our fire engines. And I'm the chair of the Legislative Committee for the County-City-County Association of Governments that is your voice in Sacramento. I am here this evening to respectfully ask for your vote to keep my experience on your side, working for each of you in San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Marty Medina.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. My name is Marty Medina, and I'm running for reelection to the San Bruno City Council. I first came to San Bruno nearly 20 years ago during the Bard expansion to the San Francisco Airport. In 2001, I was proud to work for you as a San Bruno Public Works Inspector. I was fortunate enough to purchase my home in the heart of San Bruno in 2002. Working here has enabled me to see how city government works and inspired me to pursue a construction management certificate from UC Berkeley Extension. Working here has allowed me to meet many friends, and it provided me an opportunity to coach baseball and start my community service journey. After over 10 years of service and with my son Max on the way, I made a family decision to pursue a career advancement with the Alameda County Water District. In 2013, I ran for city council and lost. In 2015, I ran again and won with the most votes in the election. It has been an honor serving on the city council these past years. I am proud of the progress we have made with our balanced budget, with supporting schools with the passage of Measure X, expansion of high-speed fiber to our community, a residential parking permit program for those neighborhoods that want it, finalizing plans for the new recreation and aquatic center, and for our downtown, a parking management plan and a street scape improvement plan. Some of the most difficult decisions remain in our future. City revenues are not keeping pace with expenditures. To address this problem, the city council approved new development impact fees and a comprehensive fiscal sustainability project. I have walked across San Bruno many times during these campaign years. Each time, I have spoken to numerous residents, those new to our community and those that have been here for a long time. We all want safe and clean streets, beautiful parks, and wonderful community programs. I want to be reelected to assure that we can continue to provide these services and to enhance San Bruno's quality of life. As your city council member, I actively providing community service and pledge to continue to support our schools, youth organizations, seniors, veterans, and those in need. I engage in open and transparent communication with our community. I seek out and listen to your concerns and ideas. I am committed to this community. I will continue to mindfully balance responsible development with minimized impacts to our community's quality of life. I look forward to answering your questions tonight and sharing my vision for improving San Bruno for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, it's time for the candidates to answer your questions. If you haven't written a question or if you think of one as the evening proceeds, again, just wave your hand, and our ushers will help you. Each candidate will have a minute to answer the question. I will vary the order in which the candidates are called on to speak. So our first question. What are your top priorities if you are elected or reelected to the city council? What are your top priorities if you are elected or reelected to the council? And we'll start with Linda Mason.
So I want to start with the aquatic center. I think the aquatic center, we've been talking about since we moved here in 2012. We went to all the public discussions. Then there was an idea that was formed over what this was going to be. Now, it's been about seven years, six years, that we've been talking about this. Recently, there was talk about whether the city was going to be able to afford an outdoor pool. Originally, there was going to be an indoor and an outdoor pool. And there was also talk about whether the city was going to be able to afford a community room. So definitely, if I was elected, I would want to put this on a timetable and make sure that we're within budget and get this project moving. As a planning commissioner, we have yet to see the final plans on this project. Secondly, a library. It's time to ask our outside community to contribute their community benefits towards something grand, not just pedestrian walkways. We should be asking for a library. It's one of the things that people wanted during this public comment period. And I think we need to advocate for it. And lastly, revitalize downtown. Our downtown really needs to be cleaned and needs to be revitalized. And we need to start bringing people downtown again. Thank you.
Next is Stephen Marshall.
Thank you. So one of the things I've been running on most and first that got me interested in running was developing downtown parking structures. Currently, the city owns, I think it's four or five, public parking lots behind a lot of the stores and restaurants on San Mateo Avenue. And I believe that we can negotiate a land lease with a private developer to build multistructure parking lots that would not only allow better parking for our downtown and help downtown, but it's also create additional parking to our adjacent homeowners who have struggled with the lack of parking for many, many years. I've seen it work in other cities. I think it could work there as well. I would also like for the city to hire an economic development director. I think that's key to our progress. Our city staff is bogged down with so many things currently. And if we could put that on someone else's plate to manage bringing in new businesses, working with developers as they want to come in town, I think that will be key to our future as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Irene O'Connell.
Building a new library is definitely top of my list. Has been for a while. We've tried several times with bond issues to get the community behind it. We were not successful, but I believe that we are closer than ever through negotiations with various development schemes. Having said that, the other thing that we need to work on extremely hard is reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We haven't touched on it much, but it is something that the state is going to come down on us sooner than later. And it's something that we need to do for our own health and our children's health. And next is a step up our game in eliminating street litter, which 1.3 million tons of garbage goes into our waterways and to the bay and the ocean. And I'm sorry, 80% of that is from single-use plastic ware that we need to work on. So those are my three goals.
Thank you. And finally, Marty Medina.
My top priorities are making sure that we are in a financial state to be able to address the problems that we're going to be facing over the future. We have a new city manager who started in July of 2018, who immediately identified this and put us on a path where we will be addressing the sustainability of our funding. In that plan, there are many aspects of it of looking at how to improve the efficiencies and making sure that our revenues are being properly accounted for with audits. For too long, we've been dealing with a downtown that has just not been able to get the attention and the foot traffic. And we have to address that. Doing things there. We do have a street scape plan that was near completion. And we need to improve the appearance, providing murals and spaces for musicians, install real street trees in the ground, and increase the code enforcement in the area in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. What makes you qualified to be able to guide our city through the important decision-making ahead in regards to meeting the state-mandated goals of providing additional housing for our community? And how will you be responsive to community input in these decisions? What makes you qualified to be able to guide our city through the important decision-making ahead in regards to meeting state-mandated goals on housing? And how will you be responsive to community input on these decisions? And we will start with Irene O'Connell.
Big question. I've been dealing with housing through the county at CCAG for a number of years. We are the subregional group that works with the regional housing numbers needs. I've worked with other cities in their planning and them meeting their housing needs from the required housing needs from the state. I worked very, very hard on the transit corridor plan that we have. It was a very thoughtful public engagement. Had a lot of public engagement. And we crafted that to protect the neighborhoods, to help revitalize downtown, to put transit, I'm sorry, to put dense housing in transit quarters that would help alleviate some of the congestion that we have.
Thank you. And next is Marty Medina.
My qualifications come from work experience. In the last few months, I've learned more about housing than I have ever thought of in my whole life in my whole life, and realizing the importance of providing affordable housing, yet making sure that housing doesn't impact the residents that are adjacent to it. We just can't blindly go forward and allow oversized buildings with immense traffic impacts to impact certain segments of our community. San Bruno is in favor of housing. The Mills Park project is an example. The problem with that, it was just too big for the area that it was being placed in. So I believe in the projects that I have already approved, of the one at Skyline of 70 units, the 62 units down by the, in the transit corridor plan down by the train station. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Linda Mason.
Yeah, so in my regular work as a policy director, I've actually written policy around housing, housing the homeless. I'm familiar with the federal regulations around housing. I'm also familiar with the successes, how to prioritize people into housing. I think it's important to note that if we are accepting 5,000 to 10,000 new employees, which is what was expected at the last Planning Commission and City Council joint meeting, then we also have a responsibility to house some of those people that we're going to be accepting into our city. So I do have experience in creating policy around housing individuals. As far as the community input, we have actually housed and rehabbed over 2,000 units in the last three years at work. The key to that housing and the key to that success was meetings, was meetings regularly every week with our residents. We met with them, we had, you know, four different interpreters to ensure everybody understood what was happening, and it was incredibly smooth. Not just that, we have redeveloped two large properties, and those have also resulted in successful transitions due to the community outreach. Thank you.
And finally, Stephen Marshall.
Sure, thank you. So I've been a licensed California real estate agent for the last 15 years, and I've worked on several new home developments, mostly on the selling and marketing side. But I do have a real good understanding of the process from different hats, from the developer to cities to the sales side. I also understand negotiation, and I understand how do I identify leverage when we have it, when we don't. Finally, I'm extremely good at building relationships and communicating. And I think if the public is involved early on on these developments, they will feel and not feel like this was planned without them, without their, I think if they're involved and the communication is open and transparent, then everything will usually go smoother. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, what ideas do you have to generate revenue for the city? What ideas do you have to generate revenue for the city? And we'll start with Marty Medina.
Development is a key part of making sure that we have revenue for our city. It's very important. We also have to make sure constantly that that development is balanced, always balanced in the community that it's going to affect. How else can we improve our revenues is by looking at the businesses that we currently have and helping them grow, helping the businesses that are in our downtown and helping them grow, providing the right format, the right environment for people to want to go to those stores, not only in the downtown but throughout San Bruno. We also can look at revenue from billboards that have for these developments and sell the space on those billboards to be able to have commercials along our freeways and our major arterial streets that have thousands and thousands of eyes that are passing through. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Irene O'Connell.
Thank you. When we worked on the transit quarter plan in 2013, one of the driving forces to the way it was designed was to enhance the downtown and the transit quarter venues, the San Mateo Avenue, San Bruno Avenue, El Camino, to help enhance our revenue. That's part of why it was that way. The other thing that the council has done always is to count our pennies and to start out our budgets with a zero-based budget, and demand from every single department head that they only budget for things that they really need. The last thing I want to mention is Measure G that is coming up. It is a sales, a half-cent sales tax. We've worked very hard to make sure it is responsive to what people wanted and the survey that everyone was invited to take. And just for everyone's information, for a $20 taxable purchase, it adds 10 cents to your total. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this is Stephen Marshall.
Thank you. So to increase city revenue, Measure G sales tax would instantly give us a boost. Number two, the parking structure I alluded to before would also give us additional revenue from the rents and also any negotiated profit share we have with the parking garages. Three, development, development, development is key to all of this. It's key to city, to San Bruno moving forward. From development, we get impact fees. We get huge property tax reassessments. The buildings we're talking about developing are paying almost next to nothing in property tax, so those will get reassessed. And then, of course, the additional sales taxes from the new business that come from these developments. I alluded to also hiring a new economic development director. Sometimes you have to spend money to make money. I think that is key to moving us forward. Currently, we're at a balanced budget, but in the next two to three years, we're going to be at a deficit. And it's very important that we don't try to get rid of this deficit by only applying for grants which take up staff time and are not consistent. We need a stable
Thank you.
...consistent increase. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Linda Mason.
Okay, one, we need to look at a hotel tax. We're looking at hotels in the Bay Hill specific plan, Jaxx, and potentially even in the Golf Driving Ranger Engvall. Two, grants, Kaboom has a current grant out right now for rebuilding playgrounds, parks, $250 million were available. I'm not clear that the city applied. And the Art and Cultural State grants have up to $35,000 right now per location. I have written in teams and by myself grants and gotten over $1 million and believe that that's a source we need to get, you know, more of. Impact fees, we should have been charging higher impact fees after Measure N passed in 2014. We started charging them May 1st of this year. Four, parking meters, we're the only city on the peninsula with no parking meters. Five, Measure K, we just asked for $150,000 for a sales tax that we've been paying for since 2012. Half Moon Bay got $12 million, Millbury got $500,000, and Geller got up to $1 million in the last year. Six, San Bruno Cable, can we expand it? Seven, Airbnb, Redwood City gets $48,000 a month. We're not getting anything. Eight, a car tax, are we looking at the car tax? Nine, are we looking at cannabis? Ten, recovered $500,000 from revenue sources.
Thank you.
And eleven, we want to ensure that our staff is getting what they should be getting from developments. Thank you.
That's verging on a paragraph.
Okay, thanks.
Our next question, will you encourage the mayor, city manager, and chief of police to do more to keep residents safe by enforcing vehicles not be parked on blocking sidewalks? Will you encourage the mayor, city manager, chief of police to do more to keep residents safe by enforcing vehicles not be parking on the sidewalks? And we'll start with Stephen Marshall.
Yes.
Linda Mason.
I will echo that yes, and say that I think that we need to reprioritize what is being enforced. I believe the city recently enforced the wrong-way vehicle, and I feel like that was kind of misguided. I don't know that I would have started there. I think that when you have vehicles blocking access to people who are in wheelchairs, for kids who have to walk around them and maybe could get hit by a car, people walking with their dogs who have maybe no leashes and could get hit by a car, I really think that we need to look at the enforcement that's happening and reprioritize them. This would definitely be one of my top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marty Medina.
So yes, I think making sure people that have access issues, whether they're walking a dog, walking with their kid, walking with a cane, that they can freely and safely walk down the sidewalk. It's a requirement. Now, San Bruno has some interesting neighborhoods where those driveways are a little too short. And one of the recommendations that was made from the Traffic Safety Parking Committee was, the joint committee was to allow those property owners to widen their driveway to allow side yard parking, to also provide some incentive for them to recess their driveway garage, the garage in their driveway so that they could fit in that car. So yes, I'm in favor of making sure that our sidewalks are clear and helping out those residents that have problems with it.
Thank you. And Irene O'Connell.
I will answer yes as well. They do the best they can, always. Unfortunately, sometimes it's a responsive, what do I want to say? They have to respond to calls, and they can't always come exactly when people phone them and say that my sidewalk is blocked or the sidewalk is blocked. So that's a problem. If you vote for Measure G, we'll have money to hire more community services officers that can come and do routine tagging. And also, we're looking at, one of the things that was responsive in the survey for Measure G was neighborhood policing, and that would go a long way to helping that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, what role has the political action group San Bruno Now played in your campaign? What role has the political action group San Bruno Now played in your campaign? And first on this is Linda Mason.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. So San Bruno Now has not endorsed anybody on this campaign, members who, I think San Bruno Now is really a coordination of a lot of residents who care about San Bruno and care about what's happening in San Bruno Now, Ken San Bruno Now. So San Bruno Now, I think, has been very vocal about the importance of this election. And as a result of them being vocal, people have shown up to not just my events but other candidate events. So I would say that they've been supportive in the same way they've been supportive, you know, in advertising anything that's happening. But with that said, I also think that San Bruno Now has been a larger vocal voice for the city of San Bruno that I think we have needed, and that has really helped the city of San Bruno put a face to the voices of people who felt like they have not been listened to for a very long time. So I appreciate San Bruno Now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stephen Marshall.
Well, I think San Bruno Now clearly has endorsed candidates. I know that on my doorstep, I received a flyer from Marty Medina, Linda Mason, and San Bruno Now all at one time. So maybe it was just coincidence that they all got there just after each other. I think San Bruno Now does have a political agenda. I think that's why they started, that's where they at. While they tried to say that they're neutral, I don't think they are. While I appreciate the efforts of anyone who wants to get information out, what I don't appreciate is the negativity. And I think that's what I've been most disappointed with in this process, is the negativity. Not the energy. The energy is awesome, but if it was positive, I think it would go a longer way.
Thank you. And next is Irene O'Connell.
I have to echo what Stephen says. The energy is great. I think people need to participate more. We often call on people, we beg them to come to council meetings, we beg them to come to budget study sessions, and we don't get any response. We put the word out, and people are either fine to have the council do what they do or they're too busy or whatever. So yes, San Bruno Now, while it hasn't directly endorsed anyone that I know of, can be extremely negative, and it can be very disconcerting. So if you are looking for information about the city, please go to the city website or ask one of the city council people or the city manager directly, and hopefully you'll get the answer that you're looking for.
Thank you. And finally, Marty Medina.
Sure. San Bruno Now is a public social media platform that's open to anybody who wants to post information there. I have posted information there to announce an event. I've been advised of other events that there's probably no other way that I would have been able to know of the event. So I don't have a problem with the platform, and people who post there, that's their right to do so. I don't necessarily agree with every post that I see on social media, whether it's on Nextdoor, San Bruno Now, or anywhere else. So I am running this campaign on positivity. I don't comment much on any of the other candidates because it's really up to the voters to decide what they want to read and what they want and how they want to vote. So that's how I feel about San Bruno Now.
Thank you. Our next question is, what is your position on the half-cent sales tax? What is your position on the half-cent sales tax? And we'll start with Irene O'Connell.
I think I've made that obvious, but I'll just start it again. We have, as a city council, we have looked very carefully at our budget. We look at our expenses. We look every single day, every single year. We try very hard to economize. We have, in recent past, blended a couple of department heads so that instead of paying for two, we pay for one. We've looked at ways to economize always, and still costs go up, just the same as they go up for you. The gas costs go up, health and healthcare go up, things that you want to do to your own house, the things that we want to do to the city, we want to improve it, we want to improve downtown, and we need a steady income source. We need something reliable. So the half-cent sales tax is reasonable. As I said earlier, it adds 10 cents, 10 cents, that stays in San Bruno. And I was playing around with some figures. So if you buy $20 worth of taxable goods, which is not food, rats, I have to stop. Anyway, I support Measure G.
Thank you. Marty Medina.
So I said earlier, our city revenues are not projected to keep pace with our expenditures. Our city is over 100 years old and needs numerous infrastructure upgrades. Years of deferred maintenance has resulted in deteriorating roads, and the longer it takes, the longer you take to repair that road, the more expensive it is. We have new state mandated storm water infrastructure repairs. We have fire stations that need to be upgraded, wildfire mitigation, numerous costs. I understand no one wants to pay more in taxes. I realize how expensive it is to live in our city. However, we must have these funds in order to pay for these improvements. If reelected, I will make sure the tough questions are asked. I will vote to make sure funds are appropriately spent. I will be voting yes on Measure G.
Thank you. And Linda Mason.
So Measure G, no, because of a couple of reasons. One is, we've already mentioned all the missed revenue sources. Two, we have a brand-new city manager with six out of 11 of our new senior staff team that's brand-new, with their first budget passed in June. It's like, I feel like it's somewhat of giving a blank check to people that we really don't know yet, and we don't know how they would manage a budget. It's the first year. I'd be open to looking at this again in a year, but I think it's important to see how such a large new team manages the money that they currently have. Three, there's no end date on the sales tax. Four, there's no limitations. Five, this has been very poor communication. The first mailing didn't even use the word "sales tax." Six, there's nothing about the committee. We're already seeing some of the same names on both of the Measure X committees and the Community Foundation. Are the same names going to be on all three of the committees that, you know, control all the money that's coming into San Bruno? Lastly, Measure N said that if passed, the sales tax on the residents would not occur. Here we are, five years later, not only do we have impact fees only starting May 1st, but a sales tax that was voted on at 3:00 AM in the morning. So when we talk about low turnout
Thank you.
I don't know if anyone's going to make public comment
Thank you.
At 3:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Next is Stephen Marshall.
So one of the reasons I decided to run was actually what Linda just talked about, is that all this new staff, we have new city manager, director of finance, park and rec, city clerk, building and planning, I've met with all of them. They're incredible. They're super well-educated, their resumes are incredible, there's this incredible camaraderie and energy. I'm for Measure G. I want to give all of them a clean slate. We can't say no to Measure G, no to development, no to this, no to that, and then wonder why we need new streets, our downtown's a mess. San Bruno has to start embracing some of this change. We need to grow.
Thank you. Okay. In recent years, San Bruno has become one of the most ethnically diverse communities in the Bay Area. What life experiences can you draw upon which will enable you to meet the needs of our changing population? In recent years, San Bruno has become one of the most diverse, ethnically diverse communities in the Bay Area. What life experiences can you draw upon that will enable you to meet the needs of our changing population? And for this, we'll start with Marty Medina.
First of all, I love our diversity in San Bruno. You walk down in our downtown and you will see a rainbow of color, or shades of color, that is, to be accurate, and sometimes rainbows, too. My life experience is growing up in the city of Salinas, and my family was one of the first Mexican families that bought a house on one side of the town. And I went to a school that was, at that time, mainly white. And eventually, over time, as the years went by, little by little, you saw the community change, and there were more colored people, more brown people, more tan people, people of all colors. And currently, I volunteer at Bel Air School, and it's wonderful to see just the smiles, and at a certain point, you don't see the color anymore. And so making sure these children and families are welcome is very, very important to our city.
Thank you. And next is Irene O'Connell.
I grew up six houses away from Bel Air School, and it was a rainbow then, and it's still a rainbow. My great nephew goes there. He's immersed in all the different ethnicities and religions and people of all sorts of persuasions of everything. It's fabulous. I go down and babysit him occasionally, and it's just the way it used to be when I was a kid. Everybody who was, I don't know how to explain it, everybody was there. That's where the, everyone started, that's where you began, all the different, everything, nationalities, races, religions, everything. That's who I was when I was growing up. That's who I am now. I went to San Francisco State, and it was involved with all the different groups that were going on at that time, too. So.
Thank you. Next is Stephen Marshall.
So in the past 30 years, my family has also changed ethnically. My brother-in-law is from El Salvador, my sister-in-law is from Nicaragua, and the woman I married is from Mexico. I'm raising three Mexican daughters. So I'm actually the minority in my family, in my house. So, I mean, it's a zero tolerance for not accepting any diversity. I mean, it's a given. It's always been in my family, lots of diverse diversity. In fact, when my dad was mayor of San Bruno, he was embraced by the Tongan community. I remember waking up one morning and they were having a parade down Crestmore Drive, roasting a pig, and then he later on went on to become an ambassador to our sister city in the Rida Japan. So diversity's always been a big part of my life.
Thank you. And Linda Mason.
Yeah, so I think diversity is not only cultural and ethnic, but also the new population that has moved into San Bruno. My husband and I have been here for seven years. We are part of the newer families, younger families that are moving in, having their kids here. So I want to first highlight that I think that that's part of the diversity that is changing San Bruno, and it would be great to represent that community. Secondly, I love the Chronicle article, "The Downtown of American Dreams." I'm really lucky that my dad is sitting in the back. I think my dad and my mom are the American dream. They have made our dreams possible because they have engaged in civic activity. And I am Mexican, I am bilingual, and I can definitely represent a diverse community by firsthand experience. I truly believe that downtown should unify the city. I think right now, our downtown divides our city, and we can use downtown as a unifying factor to celebrate ethnicities through festivals, through car shows, through farmers markets, through Community Day. It's always in the park. Why not have Community Day and in downtown with a festival for all diversities and all nationalities? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, what will you do to protect the quality of life in neighborhoods when new development is proposed? What will you do to protect the quality of life in neighborhoods when new development is proposed? And on this one, we'll start with Stephen Marshall.
Thank you. So I think I alluded to before is that communication is the key when these developments are proposed. I think that was probably why there was so much turmoil and tension with regards to Mills Park, is there were so many people who felt that they didn't know what was going on. So I think going forward with any of these new developments, communication is going to be key, getting people involved so their voices can be heard early on.
Thank you. Next is Linda Mason.
Yeah, I, we have, this is not our first forum together. I agree with Mr. Marshall. I think process is key. I think a lot of these developments, I know that in the one that, the only meeting that I went to on Mills Park, it was fully run by the developer. I think it is crucial that our staff, who is neutral, be running these meetings with our residents. These are enormous developments that are happening here that we have not had in many years. We need to be listening to residents, we need to be documenting their questions and their concerns, and we need to be providing an answer. On the Mills Park meeting, the night of the vote, one of the questions that I raised was, was there a communications plan? I had asked for it as a planning commissioner, and I had asked that, that's something that they look at prior to going to the city council. The night of the city council meeting, if I recall correctly, staff said that that wasn't the time for the communications plan, that it would be after the vote. I really think as a city council member, it's your job to say, no, this is something we need now, it's not something we need later, especially when Mills Park is having development at Allen, the Bay Hill specific plan, and Mills Park, all at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Medina.
To protect our residents from development, you have to be involved. You need to attend the meetings, understand their concerns.
You need to attend the meetings, understand their concerns. The first part that I would, to improve was making sure the notification procedures are expanded. Currently, we only let people within 600 feet of a development, only 600 feet are they advised that something's going on. I'm reading from the comments I made at the city council meeting after the Mills Park vote. We also need to provide architecturally scaled project models that exhibit the size of the project in relation to the surrounding area, so people understand how big projects are. The city needs to maintain a project webpage with a list of frequently asked questions to allow residents to have updated and reliable project information. And the city should provide city-recorded community meetings so that the information is retained and can be reexamined at a later time.
Thank you. And Irene O'Connell.
Thank you. When we started working on the Transit Quarter Plan in 2013, I fought very hard to make sure that the neighborhoods adjacent to any development, all over the Transit Quarter Plan, were protected. One of the ways that was not in any ordinance at the time was that after three stories, well, first of all, the architects had to have their development, what's called a setback, they had to be setback away from the houses that exist, then they had to step back their, the next floor of development after this third floor, so that it wouldn't be a blocky development, that it wouldn't be just a square that you see at Millbrae and Burlingame and the different areas here, so that the neighbors would have that kind of protection. Yes, we need to listen to the neighbors, yes, we need to make sure people know about it. But I've had different messages from people about the Mills Park. I know people who live up in Crestmore and in the Bel Air area that knew about the development for three years, so I'm not sure about the other parts.
Thank you. Our next question's about downtown. A lot of people have talked about renovating downtown, however, many of our residents still prefer to support businesses and surrounding communities. How can we turn this around so that our downtown businesses feel supported by our city council and residents? People have talked about renovating downtown, but residents still shop elsewhere in surrounding communities. How can we turn this around so the downtown businesses feel supported by the council and residents? And we'll start with Linda Mason.
Great, thank you. I think that, first of all, we have, we have to be the voice, right? So we have to support downtown through our own actions. So if you follow Facebook, I've been pretty vocal in posting, you know, pictures of me and my kids in front of a restaurant. I'll say, this restaurant has this many star reviews, and I'll say, this is one of our favorites because. And by saying that I'm there, then I put hashtag SBlocal. So we want to start enticing people to come downtown, and we do it ourselves by posting on social media, by word of mouth. We do need a merchants association. I personally had delivered over 65 invitations to meet, to all the merchants downtown, just to listen to them. They were very vocal in stating that they feel like they need more support, they need more walking traffic, they need the streets cleaned, and these are things that the city can support with. As far as support, parking, we desperately need a parking structure. There's one, there's a lot for sale right now across the street from Caltrain. It's a perfect location for a parking structure. It could be similar to South City, where they charge between $6 and $6 to Caltrain riders, and then it's free afterwards for residents to walk around downtown.
Thank you. Next is Stephen Marshall.
So I'm down, I couldn't live probably any further from downtown San Mateo Avenue, but I'm there probably at least five days a week, whether it's for coffee, lunch, dinner. I could tell you why I don't go downtown at times is because parking is, become awful. That's why I think we need parking structures there. And sometimes it's just not nice. The, the environment on certain blocks of San Mateo Avenue is just not nice, and I wish that we could better enforce the codes. It's one thing if a building is vacant, but it can be vacant and clean. It doesn't have to be cluttered inside, at least clean the windows. And, yeah, I mean, I'm downtown a lot.
Thank you. And Irene O'Connell.
Thank you. I think we have an exciting, diverse downtown. I think there's a lot of opportunities for people to experience restaurants that are different. I go downtown every other day practically, for coffees, for meeting people, for shopping, buy my glasses there, go twice as nice and buy clothing, all this, go to the Mexican market and buy my food and groceries. Yes, the council, I believe every member of the council goes downtown, and maybe, yes, merchants association would be fabulous. The problem is to get the merchants to try that. We've tried it several times, we couldn't get cooperation that way. I've tried to put art and murals downtown, I couldn't get cooperation of the owners. We had, we used to have street fairs downtown to get people to go downtown, to shop and to enjoy the diversity that's there. It was, they petered out because people wouldn't go downtown. Parking is a problem, we are working on it, and, and I'm sure we'll keep on working.
Thank you. And Marty Medina.
The number-one thing we can do to support our downtown is to make sure we go, and to make sure we tell people of the wonderful stores that are there. Yes, we could keep it cleaner, yes, we need more art. We have a street skate project that has identified a number of things that we need to do to improve it. In addition to those things, besides the parking meters and the parking structures, is installing loading zones, so shoppers, and especially those with children, can safely get to the various youth-oriented businesses, karate, judo, playtime, fitness, and swimming, and reduce the unsafe, unsafe double parking. We also need to be looking at installing 12-minute parking spaces to allow shoppers, the new shoppers that are coming in and out, picking up a sandwich, doing a GoDash, or whatever, whatever else of food delivery services that are there to help our downtown businesses sell their food and get people in and out quickly. And we also need to transform that fenced-off fountain area into a real usable community space to have performances and a totlot with a dining area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, "Do you stand to financially benefit from a council position, or do any of your donors?" Do you stand to financially benefit from a council position, or do any of your donors? And we'll start with Irene O'Connell.
I think the last paycheck I got from the city had $8.65, so in general, I'm not sure what to say. No, I, the donors I have, and throughout all my career, of all the different elections that I've been through, I've had donors from all walks of life, I've had donors from different organizations, and I have never, ever gotten a phone call from any of them asking for anything, except to listen to something that they may be concerned about as a, as a resident. So benefit financially, no, I don't think so.
Thank you. Marty Medina.
See, I turned my paperwork in for a campaign, Form 460, and I currently have $7,030 in my campaign coffers. $6,000 of that is for myself, personal loan, and there's a few other small $250 donations, a couple hundreds, and $130 that I didn't really have to put down their name. I can assure you that none of the people that are associated with me would benefit from donating to my campaign. I have a high amount of integrity, I have a high amount of love for my community, I do this out of my heart. I want to see a better San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Mason.
No, for those of you who are not aware, haven't had a chance to look at my website, I have, my husband has supported me in making the decision to self-fund this entire campaign. I had requested 10 years of campaign financial records for every election here in San Bruno, so I had an idea of what an average election cost. The amount that one of the candidates up here has spent, over $40,000, is almost more than all of the candidates in the last 10 years combined. So I think it's important to know that I, in looking at the financial records, I was aware that the last time large contributions were made was in 2013, and what a, what a coincidence that that was the year before Measure N passed, and Measure N was supposed to be, was supposed to spawn development. Now, was it to the tune of $40,000? Absolutely not. So I did make a very informed decision, and I had the support of my family, to self-fund this campaign to ensure that there are no outside influences, and that the only people influencing my decision are the people who are sitting in this room, and those are San Bruno residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephen Marshall.
So I definitely don't think I have anything financially to gain. I don't even know what this job pays. I think it's less than $500 a month, so I can't live off that. I probably have a lot more to lose from the time I take away from my own career doing this. As far as contributions, I have raised a lot of money, and I worked hard to raise that money. My list is made up of San Bruno residents, San Bruno business owners, and old-time friends and family who believe in me. My endorsements, endorsements are earned, I'm a very independent guy. You could ask my family, you could ask my friends, everyone knows they're not going to get anything out of the deal just because they wrote me a check to support my campaign. To be honest, I would be more concerned about candidates who have formed a ticket to run for city council together, because I wonder what's behind that, and the volunteers that they have working for them together, and what are they going to owe those volunteers? What's, what's behind that? My contributions come from longtime San Bruno residents and business owners who support me and believe that I can do a good job.
Thank you. Now we're going to switch gears and ask about dogs. What do you think about our new ordinance allowing dogs in San Bruno parks? What do you think about the new ordinance allowing dogs in San Bruno parks? And this will start with Stephen Marshall.
Thank you. So I served on the Park and Rec Commission for many years, and the dog park issue was always a huge issue. We fought for, I don't know how many years, to get dogs allowed, excuse me, on leashes in our parks, mostly because our dog park that we offer in the sitter, in the city, was always in such poor condition. So I am in favor of dogs in parks as long as the owners are responsible. That's the only issue, is we have to, we're going to have to make sure the owners are responsible for the dogs.
Thank you. Linda Mason.
Yeah, so I think that while my opponent fought for many years to get dogs in parks, it was residents of San Bruno who came together to ensure that dogs are actually allowed in parks. I think that that shows the power of San Bruno residents when they're informed and when they're united, and when they align with the vision of our commissions and our councils. Our parks are filled with dogs. I cannot lie, I am not a big dog person, I'm kind of scared of them, but that is, my role as a, as an elected official would definitely not, you know, play into whether dogs can go in parks or not. What I'm happy about is that residents got what they wanted, and at the end of the day, I visit a lot of our parks, and every single park I visit has very happy owners and very happy dogs and very happy families, and everybody seems to be living in these parks together okay. So, meaning this all worked out, and I was really happy to hear that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Marty Medina.
I love dogs. I haven't had a dog in a long time, because I know it takes a lot of responsibility. I have a seven-year-old son that wants a dog, and he takes a lot of responsibility, too. So at some point, hopefully in the near future, I'll be getting a dog, and I'll be really happy to walk him on a leash through City Park. I did vote in support of this ordinance. I do commend Raina and Tim for, out there in the audience, for helping push that forward. I am not aware of any problems that have resulted in dogs being in the park. Again, it's not the dog's fault, it's the owner's fault for misbehaving and not knowing better to pick up after himself. I mean, the dog doesn't have opposing thumbs or anything, so it'd be pretty difficult. But in all seriousness, I think it's great. When you walk in the park and you see a dog and it's on a leash, and you see the smiles that are generated from that, it's a wonderful thing, so, thank you.
Thank you. And Irene O'Connell.
I do have a dog. He weighs 90 pounds. His name is Doc. He is three years old, and I do not take him on leash through the parks because he is rather frightening-looking. And I know that there are a lot of children, and as I say, so my great nephew is afraid of some dogs, and he's intimidating. I've seen dogs on leashes that are intimidating. I've seen families turn around and leave the parks because there are dogs all over the place, and their kids are either allergic to dogs, or they're afraid of dogs, or other things. So I voted no, because I had quite a few people who contacted me who said they would not like to have dogs in the park. They contacted me since then and complained about people who, yes, dogs can't clean up after themselves, but the people who are responsible for the dogs should be doing that, and they don't like walking their kids through parks where they expect to be able to play and not worry about what they step on and have stepped on, some residue from dogs. So I did vote against it.
Thank you. From where do you propose funding, finding the funding for a new library? Where do you propose to find the money for a new library? And on this, we'll start with Linda Mason.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think that when you want something and you have a company that's an international company such as YouTube, you start asking companies like YouTube what the community benefit is going to be. So when YouTube, when I became a planning commissioner, YouTube actually called all of the planning commissioners and asked to meet, where all the commissioners met either at YouTube or at the city hall, those who met with YouTube. I actually told YouTube I would only meet with them at the San Bruno library. None of them had been to our library, none of them lived in San Bruno, and honestly, when they walked into our library, I think they were shocked at how aged our library was. So first and foremost, I would ask that that would be one of the community benefits to the large redevelopment, and that would more than likely be a large give. In addition to that, we need to go after major grant funding and private funding. So Half Moon Bay just opened their $24 million library. $12 million of that came from Measure K, $6 million of that, I believe, came from savings, if I'm correct, and I believe the other $6 million came from some kind of a bond measure. And I can double-check that and post that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Marshall.
So to be honest, I don't think it would be on my list of priorities to be looking for funding for a library, at least at this time. I mean, there's nothing wrong with libraries, it would be, it would be awesome to have, but between the build we have with the Park and Rec, and my priorities would be more towards downtown, infrastructure, parking, and library would be down the road for me.
Thank you. And next is Irene O'Connell.
The Bay Hill Plan and our communication with YouTube, Google, started many years ago. I met them many years ago and asked them, and told them about my passion for having a new library. They know it well, they may have not talked to the planning commissioners at that time, but they certainly talked to the council, and they had several leveraged things that we're talking about, and we're working on that. Just to clarify with Measure K, yes, Half Moon Bay got a new library, yes, some of that money came from Measure K, but it is a library that serves half, half of the people it serves, it comes from the county, and that, the money that would be bonded to pay for a library would not come from those people. So the county made an exception about that Measure K money and used it to help pay for that library, and that's the only reason. Pacifica did the same thing, they wanted a new library, they went out to bond, they asked for Measure K money, and they were told no, because that city does not serve the county people.
Thank you. And finally, Marty Medina.
It would be great to have a library. I would think it'd be something more than just the library of old, it'd be more of a community service, a community center based with more rooms for adults, and to be able to have a meeting space instead of just meeting at the community center down at City Park. We don't have enough resources around, yet nonetheless, buildings are expensive, extraordinarily expensive, and to pay for it, a combination of community benefits, the issue was brought up during YouTube's discussion, so I'm not sure exactly where the community benefits are going to fall. Definitely have to pursue some grant funding to assist with those costs. Our current library is not large enough to house the library suited for our community. That was based on the community outreach through the San Bruno Community Foundation, so we know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question's about social media. As elected officials, how should council members conduct themselves in responding to or making comments on social media in discussions involving important city matters? As elected officials, how should council members conduct As elected officials, how should council members conduct themselves on responding to or making comments on social media in discussing important city matters? And we'll start with Irene O'Connell.
They shouldn't. That's the short answer. Council people are public servants and when there's an issue that is a public, that is about the public, for the public, has anything to do with the public, if it's housing, if it's anything that is going to affect the public, those concerns, the people and the council people's opinions about those need to be heard in open session. You, all of you, need to be able to know that Irene O'Connell is going to talk about or it's going to be on the agenda at a certain time and there's going to be public comment about it. And then we, as a council, listen to that public comment, we listen to what staff's saying and then we deliberate and then we do it. If we put our comments and opinions on social media, who sees it? We never know. And then you already have made up your mind and you and the other council people can see it and know what we're thinking about that. That's not fair. We need to keep an open, transparent communication. If you need to know about something, if you want to hear about something, do it in public. Don't do it on social media.
Thank you. And next is Marty Medina.
Well, I have a little bit of different opinion than that. I'm on social media. I use social media to connect with our community. I do that with informing them of what things, when events are happening, what has happened. And it's really important to be careful as a council member to use your discretion and being able to know when it's appropriate to talk about something. Many people rely on social media and having an additional stream of information to inform our communities is how we get more people involved. So, conduct yourself with grace, be courteous to people, don't get into a fight with people, agree to disagree, and move on. So, that's my opinion on being on social media.
Thank you. And Linda Mason.
Yeah, so I think that part of being a leader is meeting people where they are and I think social media is an amazing avenue to actually talk to people, hear people, discuss things with people. I think that there are limitations. The California Bar, the Bar Association hosts an update every year for attorneys in the public sector and this was actually one of the topics of the events that I went to. And what they discussed was the idea of best practices and one of the examples they gave was San Mateo. So, cities have best practices, cities have social media policies for their elected leaders. It's time that we adopt one and that we catch up to the tech cities that we're around. After all, we are in the Silicon Valley. We are the international headquarters of YouTube and I think it's also, you know, to considerate of working families, the busy, the elderly, those who can't always attend meetings, especially meetings where sales taxes are approved at 3:00 in the morning and that's when public comment is anticipated. I mean, I think we have to be very realistic about conversations that are being had and aware of the community that we're serving. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Stephen Marshall.
So, I think I'm probably somewhere in the middle. I do like social media for different aspects. I think it's important to make announcements there and it's a good platform to let people know about different things going on. But, you know, I was at my daughter's back-to-school night the other night and the principal said, "If you have any issues with the teacher, please send an email, no longer than a sentence, saying, 'Can I please meet with you or speak to you by phone?'" Because there's, everything gets confused via social media, email, text message. You can't look the person in the eye, you can't hear their tone of voice and things get misconstrued. So, if we're talking about city business on Facebook or Instagram or even via text or email, I think it's very, very dangerous and if we have a position like this, that the response should be simply, "Hey, I'd be happy to meet with you for a cup of coffee. Let's chat on the phone." So, we could see who we're talking to, hear the tone in our voice and look them in the eye.
Thank you. Our next question is about homelessness. What are your proposed solutions to help, to help the homeless population, not just eliminate them? What is your proposed solution to help the homeless population and not just eliminate or cover up the issue? And for this, we'll start with Marty Medina.
This is probably one of the hardest things to, I think that our cities are facing because the depth of the problem is beyond our capacity to assist. We don't, we don't have the funds that need to get people the help that they need to be able to deal with the mental health issues, to deal with the drug addiction, with the We need more services at the higher level. We're looking at, at the state level, the county level. The city currently obtained services from the county, from Life Moves, who have a group of counselors that go out into the community and try to help people. But one of the biggest problems they face is some of them don't want help and if you try to give them some assistance, they say, "Get out of here, leave me alone."
Thank you. And next is Irene O'Connell.
It is a heart-wrenching problem. We see more and more families in cars. We see, it just gets overwhelming, as Marty said, and we don't have the resources or the, even the capacity to do a lot. We do help fund Life Moves. It is a fabulous organization that meets and tries to help each individual the best they can and directly toward what that individual needs. We also have a police officer that is assigned to homeless cases and they work with Life Moves and they help coordinate treatments and, you know, it's not a crime to be homeless. It's a difficulty. It's a, it's a condition that people are experiencing. It's just a difficult time for everyone, so I, somebody once said to me, you know, "Be careful." Oops, I have to stop.
Thank you. And Stephen Marshall.
Yeah, so there are two great organizations, Life Moves and Star Vista, one of which I served as president of the Board of Directors for many years. And prior to becoming, being a real estate agent, I was a drug and alcohol counselor for several years. And what I've learned is that a lot of homelessness stems from drug addiction and alcoholism and a lot of drug addiction and alcoholism stems from mental health issues. I mean, these are people. They're human. They're our brothers, our aunts, our uncles and they needed to be treated respectfully and we need to offer them the help that they need. That being said, if they refuse the help, there has to be consequences because it's not healthy for them and it's not healthy for our community for people to be living on the streets. So, do I have the answer to that? No. But what I do know, as a community, we can't tolerate people to be living on the streets. So, that's the solution we did come up with.
Thank you. And Linda Mason.
Yeah, so I think it's, this job that I have now is one of the most rewarding jobs that I've had because we do, I actually just connected a mother and her daughter, and two true daughters who have been living in a car, to a unit that was available. I think that there is, there's not a solution. If there was a solution, the state of California would be saving, you know, over a billion dollars a year. But I do think that from my experience, the best is collaboration. So, I would love to see something like what a Northern California county did where they partnered with their local housing authority because, let's face it, homeless cannot afford most of the affordable housing that's out there. It needs to be some kind of a Section 8 voucher or low-income housing and they partnered with a third party who, once they got the grants, it was, I believe, 60 vouchers, a third party actually connected them to private residences throughout the entire county and this was a very large county. And it did take time. It took three different parties to apply for the grant, but I believe of the 60, 58 households were stably housed off the street. If we do not collaborate with the county and with other cities, this, we cannot be successful. We don't have the resources to do this on our own.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, what unique and special skills do you bring to this position or what is your superpower? And we'll start with Stephen Marshall. What is your superpower?
My superpower? So, I'm a listener. I listen a lot more than I do talk. I'm a quiet guy, but I do listen. I don't just, when I do talk, I usually have something to say. I just don't talk to hear myself speak. That's kind of, I guess, my, my personal attribute that I can bring to this job. Professionally, I have a background, like I said before, in eclectic background in real estate and I think with all the upcoming development that's coming to the city, that I will be a useful voice on this council when it comes to understanding where developers are coming from, understanding where our leverage is. And then, of course, my background that I just talked about as far as in drug and alcohol counseling shows an attribute of compassion that I have and I believe that everyone's voice should be heard all the time.
Thank you. Linda Mason, what is your superpower?
Yeah, so I would say that I am a doer. So, I know we hear a lot of different boards that people have sat on absent, unlike being, you know, a person who's been on many boards, I feel like I have actually accomplished a lot in my short time of a career as an attorney. I think that when, you know, as early as high school, I was my class president. In law school, I was my student body president. I got a coveted internship in the U.S. Embassy in Madrid, Spain. I have been very active. I became a planning commissioner. Within a year, I was unanimously appointed to be the chair of the Planning Commission by, you know, half of the Planning Commission who had been on for, I want to say, over 10 years and the other half who were new like me. So, I think that I am a doer. I like to collaborate. This has been a very contentious election, but I think at the end of the day, the most important part of the future for the city is that we all come together and decide what we want our city to look like. And I do think that I would be the right person for that job because I'm a doer and because I don't just talk. I will actually get out there and help the city write grants. I will actually get out there and help the city clean up. I will actually get out there and meet with the merchants, as I've been doing throughout this entire election. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marty Medina, what is your superpower?
Kind of depends who you're going to ask, but since you're asking me, now honestly, by working here for almost 11 years in Public Works and using that construction experience here in San Bruno and also at the Alameda County Water District, as soon as I took that other job, I was running for election here in 2013 and I asked, "Why don't we use PVC pipe in our water system? It's used throughout the world." And guess what? Eventually PVC pipe is coming to San Bruno. It's lighter, it's easier to manage, it saves money in construction. So, having that experience and being able to bring it to the council as we're dealing with an aging city is very valuable. But I had, I take more pride in being able to work with people. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Irene O'Connell, what is your superpower?
That's a toughie. I was trying to figure out the one. I, I'm a doer, I'm a collaborator, I'm analytical. I sometimes stumble over words, sorry. I, I'm a problem solver. I look at what's out there and actually go do it. I started the Beautification Task Force. It's a group of people, volunteers, who meet once a month. We saw a need to clean up the city, so we started Operation Clean Sweep. So, we do it annually. We get over 200 volunteers and we go out and pick up hundreds and hundreds of pounds of garbage and recycling. I saw a need for art in, public art and for culture activities in San Bruno, so I persuaded the city council to create the Culture and Arts Commission. And if you see the new electric boxes that are around San Bruno Avenue mostly, you'll see their latest contribution to public art. We have a statue in front of the library, we have the park and the murals at the train station. So, I collaborate and do things.
Thank you. Next question. What are the candidates' positions? What are your positions on sea and groundwater rise in the areas east of El Camino now, now, given the notification by FEMA last year and the city's exposure there? What are your, what is your position on sea and groundwater rise in the areas east of, on El Camino now, given the notification by FEMA last year and the city's exposure there? And we'll start with Linda Mason.
Yeah, so my knowledge on this is limited, but what I do know is that this is an area of concern that we do need to look towards long-term. This is not something that's going to be resolved overnight. I was actually just listening to somebody from the City and County of San Francisco saying that they're also concerned about this with the airport and with, I mean, pretty much everybody who's along the water. So, all I would say to this is it's something that we need to be alert and we need to make sure that we're informed and we're aligned with all of our neighbors because I don't think that this is a solution that San Bruno alone is going to come up with to resolve and without, again, collaboration, we are going to get stuck. We do need to collaborate with our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephen Marshall.
Yeah, my knowledge is limited as far as what the city, the exposure to the city is. My experience with this comes from just my profession and the effect it will have on homeowners over there with, with regards to having to get flood insurance, which can be extremely costly and at times price people out of homes. So, I agree that this is something that we probably will have to work with our county, state, and maybe even federal leadership to, to get more information on, on how we could lower the impact at the city level.
Thank you. And Irene O'Connell.
Thank you. First of all, the city worked really hard to try to minimize the impact of the FEMA mapping that went on, so I think we worked for two years with Jackie Speer's office and got us, got it, they get it reduced, but not as far as we'd like to. I'm on the Coleman Creek Advisory Committee. We coordinate with the county and their sustainability. We have money that we're working on the levy that would help with alleviating some of the flooding that FEMA says happens that we haven't seen yet. I'm also a founding member of the Sustainability Sea Level Rise Sustainability. I don't think they've decided on a title yet. It's a group of five people, the five people, including a board of supervisor member, two board of supervisor members, I'm sorry, seven people, one from the coast, one from the bay, one at large and two from other cities that are joining together and have been given the authority through the legislature, through Kevin Mullen, can I just finish this sentence, through Calvin Mellon to work on sustainable, sea level rise and the solutions. So, I was on the founding group with that.
Thank you. And Marty Medina.
So, on this one, I do agree with Irene O'Connell for this one. The city council did fight the FEMA remapping of the flood zone. Unfortunately, we were not successful and this resulted in numerous residences along, in the avenues to have to purchase flood insurance if they do have a mortgage and many people have mortgages, as we know. My position on that is, a recommendation to all the homeowners there is make sure that you apply for the flood insurance early because there is a systematic ra, raising of the rates and if you try to come in later, you're going to come in at a higher cost. The last thing is that the sea level rise issue is a county-wide, worldwide problem that the county has started a new program as indicated by Councilman O'Connell.
Thank you. The next is about working with the school district. How will you work with the school district, the San Bruno Park School District, on shared projects in terms of thoughtful land use, parking and, and for the betterment of the students and the community? So, how will you work with the school district, the San Bruno Park School District, in terms of thoughtful land use, parking, shared projects for the betterment of the students and the overall community? And we'll start with Irene O'Connell.
We do work with the school district now. We have two council members that liaison with the school board, with two members of the school board and they discuss issues of the day. Any land use issues that come up for repurposing of any of the school sites. Of course, we go through a process the same way any development would. You know, they, the school board is their own, their own governing body and as is the school, I'm sorry, as is the city council. the school, I'm sorry, as is the city council. We collaborate with them on many things, we discuss things with them, but we don't butt into their business, and they don't butt into our business too. When there's opportunities for collaboration and for doing a better job together than apart, we do certainly do those things. There's some information out there that the city lost an opportunity to buy El Cristal School. It was, well, I have to stop.
Thank you. And Marty Medina.
It's true. The school board deals with the schools, the, the city deals with city functions, and there's not much overlap there. However, in those areas that we can meet, and I'm not aware there's a subcommittee currently, I, I was on the subcommittee a number of years ago, and I think it's very, very important that we do have these meetings so that we can talk about these shared issues of housing, of land use, of a better San Bruno. Because without great schools, you can't have a great city. I volunteer at Bel Air School currently, as much, as many times as I can to get down and, and be there to, to just supervise a simple soccer game during lunch. And the teachers afterwards say, that amount of time is very valuable because it gives the kids some order and it lets them exercise in a proper environment.
Thank you. And Lynda Mason.
Yeah, so I have a very personal investment in the schools. My son is a, is in the second grade at one of our public schools. I'm the only candidate up here, and I think it's important to point out that has our children in K through eight public schools, and I would be the only city council member, and that represents over 2,000 of our kids here in San Bruno. El Cristal, even though that, even though the city is a different entity than the school district, I would watch these meetings where parents would come to the city council meeting upset that their school is closing. Many people don't know the legal difference between a school board and a city council. What would have been nice would be for the school and the city to have had a joint study session, which is what I would recommend moving forward. It's something that some of the school board members have already recommended, and I think it's really important because how nice would it have been to ask the school district to have a member of their staff here so that as parents come in on their free time after work to ask about their closing school, instead of having to be sent to another meeting, they could step outside and ask questions of a staff member? We need to collaborate. A lot of schools are potentially closing or being sold. This is a very important time.
Thank you. And Stephen Marshall.
Yeah, the schools are extremely important to any city. I even tell people, even if you don't have children, it's so important to support the local schools because they have such an impact on the community as a whole, on property values, on property tax, everything. I understand that the city council doesn't butt in on the school board stuff, and the school board doesn't butt in on the city council stuff, but I do agree that it's extremely important to be some collaboration, because, you know, the school board may decide to sell a property, but ultimately, it's the city council who's going to decide what's allowed to go there afterwards. So there should be open communication with, with regards to all of that. So I'm all in favor of a lot of communication between the two boards.
Thank you. All right, our next question. Have you or would you vote to raise water, sewer, and garbage rates? Have you or would you vote to raise water, sewer, and garbage rates? And we'll start with Marty Medina.
I have voted against every water and sewer rate increase in San Bruno. I voted against the first garbage increase, and then I voted to approve the contract extension for recology. I approved that contract because I was told late in negotiations that to put the project or to put the business to bid would cost, and I believe at that time it was $300,000, and we didn't have time to do that, and so I voted for that contract. And since I voted for that contract, I own it, and I voted for the next garbage rate increase. So no on water, no on sewer, yes on garbage, one of the times.
Thank you. Irene O'Connell.
I have very proudly voted yes on every water and sewer rate increase. We have an aging system that's in many places over 100 years old, and I know there are some, in some places, there's water breakage of the water lines every week, and those things need to be repaired and replaced. We've been working on them for a long time. We have water tanks that were not, we weren't able to fill and to keep the pressure for fire suppression for the fire hydrants up because those water tanks weren't full. It's an aging system that needs a lot of work, and it's very, very expensive. So yes, I proudly did that. And I want to say something, that when Marty Medina and I were on the subcommittee for the utility rates, he and I agreed at the time that, yes, raising the utility rate for 5% at the time was acceptable. And while he did not vote for it at a council meeting, he did vote, he did tell me that, and staff, that he would support it at a subcommittee meeting. So I, I'm still reeling from that one.
Thank you. Stephen Marshall.
So I learned a lot from Marty. Marty gave me some advice when I decided to run for city council. He said, be careful about the promises you make, because once you get there, you realize there's a lot of things you can't really do. And I know Marty had good intentions when he ran about lowering rates, and when you get the job, you realize there's a lot more to it. So I, learning from that, I vowed not to make any promises that I don't think are realistic. I don't think I'm qualified at this point to make a judgment if, if I'll vote to raise or not raise rates in the future, because, number one, I don't have the job yet, and I don't know what the circumstances will be. So I can honestly say, I don't know, and if I'll vote as appropriate at the time.
Thank you. And Lynda Mason.
Yeah, so I'm similar, but I would just make this comment that I am, it might be, and we've got two council members here, but it might be a moot point, because this is a three-year term, and my understanding is that rates are going to continue going up for the next three years. So I don't know that we would be voting on this in the next three years. So with water and sewer, I'll leave it at that, because I, I don't know enough about what the needs are, except that we have needs, and that my feeling is that we have had an increase every single year since we moved here. And if anything, I would vote no, just to take a break. It doesn't mean that in the future, there wouldn't be a yes vote, but I think people need a break. I had a single mom message me on Facebook, meet with me, and said, if our water rates go up again, we're going to have to move, we just can't afford it. So the reality is that we have to consider the rest of the residents too, and I think we're going to need at least a break after these 10 years. Regarding garbage, I would just say that I think that it would be prudent as stewards of public funds to make sure that, that these garbage rates are procured. The purpose of procurements is to make sure you're getting competitive bids. We do need to reprocure the garbage, and, and we need to determine whether we're getting the most competitive rate for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. Can you tell us about a time when you've been talking with a constituent or other person who had a different viewpoint, and it made a difference in your action? Can you tell us about a situation, and when you've had a discussion with a constituent or other person with a different viewpoint, and it made a difference in your actions? And we'll start with Stephen Marshall. Sure. Can you tell us about a situation in which you had a discussion with a constituent or other person who had a different viewpoint and it, than yours, and it made a difference in your thinking or actions? Tough one to be first on, I know.
So I think that I always have discussions with constituents and residents and neighbors, and they have different viewpoints, and I, I always listen and take it into consideration. One thing about me, like I've said before, I'm very open-minded, I'm very independent. I don't walk into any situation with my mind made up. So I think I take from every meeting and discussion I have with people, different action, and different thoughts in going forward. So yeah, I think that makes up most of my discussions with constituents.
Thank you. Lynda Mason.
Yeah, I would echo that. I think this has been a very interesting election. One of the first doors I knocked on, the first question that was asked was, what do you think of fireworks? And I thought, wow, I didn't expect that question. And I think it really makes you reflect on what your values are, not just in fireworks, but on many other issues, and then what your role is, separate from your values, but your, what your role is representing other people. And with fireworks, I would just say on the record that, you know, I think we enjoy the fireworks on our street. We, it's a block event for us. All of the families on our block come out and do fireworks. I think it's part of the American dream, to be quite honest. I remember watching my girl as a kid, and everybody was doing fireworks on the Fourth of July. I don't think illegal fireworks are okay. I think they should be enforced. We have the same neighbors around the corner that do illegal fireworks every year, and I'm quite sure that it's the same house. I'm not sure why nobody goes to their house and confiscates those illegal fireworks. But, but I do think it's important that we listen, and we listen to the entire community, not just certain voices. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marty Medina.
So I'll tell you a story, a recent story about a constituent that contacted me, and this person was concerned about the Crestmore Canyon and the fire potential there. And I went out to the property, took a look at it. We were approaching budget season in, in San Bruno, and this person showed me their backyard, and there were trees, and, and over the fence, there were years of accumulated leaves and branches. And that inspired me to ask during council budget session that we needed to do something, and we had to put some money aside. And that's one of the reasons why I always want to be connected to people, is to, to be able to get to their concerns and to be able to address them.
Thank you. And Irene O'Connell.
I've talked to thousands of constituents and residents over the years, and two things stick out. One, you get to hear the other side, and oftentimes, even what you think you know, you can modify to come to some kind of compromise. And since someone else brought up fireworks, when we, when we did the whole thing with fireworks, we are the only city in United, in California, anyway, that I know of, that allows the sales of fireworks, but then we charge back to the people who earn money from the fireworks to help with law enforcement and to help with the cleanup afterwards. If we did away with legal fireworks, we wouldn't have that, and we would be suffering the same as South City, Millbrae, Burlingame, that they don't have any mechanism to help out with enforcement for the illegal fireworks, which are in those cities anyway. So that's one of the things that happened when we were talking to people about the fireworks. They said, well, you know, modify what you've got, and that's what we did. So we do that all the time.
Thank you. And so we can adjourn all time. This is going to be our last question. Again, I want to thank the audience for their fabulous questions. I've covered up my script with them all, and it's just been great, so thank you very much. Last question. How will you ensure that all of San Bruno is fairly represented by council? How will you ensure that all of San Bruno is fairly represented by this council? And we will start with Lynda Mason.
Yeah, so I think that this starts at the highest level of governance. So you have your city council, then you have your commissions, and then you have your committees. So first of all, I'd want the city council to ask staff to create a toolbox for all of its committees. What is the committee's role? What, what is the enforcement mechanism that they have? Who follows those enforcement mechanisms? At least two trainings per year on the Brown Act, a specific project each year for each of those committees to, to ascertain. And I think that once you have a leadership that understands that our main role as leaders is to listen to the public, is to ensure that the, that we are following the rules and regulations, not putting the city at risk for any liability. I really think we can move the city forward, but most of all, I think the top two things are we need to have very strong governance that is all about accountability and, and listening to the residents, and then secondly, that residents know that they're being heard through the actions of their leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stephen Marshall.
So I know I've talked a lot about it tonight, but communication is key. We have, there has to be outreach, has to start from the city council. I know a lot of, I've heard, and I've had this discussion with other council members, where it's easy to say that if you get on city council, you're going to be out there and you'll be outreach, but it is on the residents as well. But I think we have to take the first step to encourage that, actively visit neighborhoods and neighborhood schools. And once we, once we inter, interface with people of all parts of the city, at that point, we can do the ask. We can encourage them to maybe join in different commissions and boards and get involved that way.
Thank you. And Irene O'Connell.
Thank you. I think communication, again, is one of the keys. One of the things that we tried at one time, and I think we, it would be worthwhile trying again, is occasionally hold a city council meeting in a different venue. I know at one point, we held it, one at Bel Air School, and we had a translator there. We've held, held them at various places. I think it's something we need to look at again. But I want to tell you a quick story. I was walking and knocking doors and talking to people, and I ran into somebody that I had known for years, and I said, oh, you know, I hope you're supporting me, blah, blah, blah. And he said, no, I'm not. And I, and I said, oh, okay, well, what's the problem? And he says, well, I have two reasons, fireworks and cable. I said, okay, and so we talked about them. He said, you know, I don't, I don't like what you did, and I'm not voting for you. I said, okay, I understand, thank you. Gave him a hug, said, see you around, and we'll talk more later. Walked, I swear to you, like 10 houses away, knocked on the door, saw somebody, same thing, and I said, I said, you know, I hope you support me, and he says, yes, I do. I've always supported you. I love what you did on fireworks and the San Bruno cable. That's the difficulty people up here run into. So the more you communicate with us, the easier it is.
Thank you. And finally, Marty Medina.
One of the things I strongly believe in is making sure that I am accessible to our community, that if you do reach out to talk to me, to email me, I will get back to you. We could disagree on big projects or small things, but you still deserve a response. And that's all about building a relationship with your community and making sure that you do listen, and it's okay to disagree. I, I, I feel I do a good job at that because I come from a family of seven. I have three older brother, three older sisters, one older brother, me in the middle, and two younger brothers. So I'm that, that middle child that's always seeking some balance and some fairness. So it's okay to disagree with people. It doesn't have to be personal. So building upon that open communication, and then all of a sudden, you start getting trust, so that when somebody does disagree with you, you get a benefit of the doubt, and that you can continue discussing the issue and hopefully reach a compromise. So people deserve timely responses when they contact the city, and we still need to work on that. When somebody sends an email, they need a response, and the city's working on a communication plan that has been overdue for a while now. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, it is time for the closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement, and we will reverse the order from that of the opening statements. So that means we start with Marty Medina.
Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this event, and thank you all for your attention. If your question wasn't asked, please call me, 650-580-3445. Like many of you, I want to provide my family with the wonderful place to live. I love being involved with our community. I am a proud member of the San Bruno Lions. I volunteer at Bel Air Elementary, the San Bruno American Legion, and Second Harvest Food Bank. I coach baseball, soccer, and help however I can with the Cub Scouts. I attend as many city meetings and, and functions as possible to directly hear from our residents. This insight lets me understand what is going on in our community. For council meetings, I do my homework, study the agenda packet, and ask questions. I bring up community concerns and rely on my 20 years of construction experience. In the next few years, the city council will review numerous large In the next few years, the city council role will review numerous large development projects, including Mills Park, 40 acres at Crestmore, 21 acres at Ingall, and the Bay Hill specific plan with over 2 million square feet of new office space and up to 1,000 additional units if San Bruno voters approve higher height limits. Regardless of whether you live near or far from these developments, I will listen to your concerns. I am committed to mindfully balance responsible development with minimized impacts to our community’s quality of life. Four years ago, I asked San Bruno voters for the opportunity to improve our city. We are on the right path. Today, I humbly ask for your vote so I can continue to be the accessible and responsible council member that listens and acts on your behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Irene O’Connell.
So again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for providing the opportunity for tonight’s forum, and to all of you here and at home who are vested in the future of San Bruno. A former mayor advised me when I first ran for city council to do your homework. Think about what’s best for San Bruno and vote your conscience. I’ve lived by this advice ever since. I have advocated for, created, and fostered numerous programs, procedures, and policies to benefit the residents of San Bruno. At the regional level, I’ve fought to preserve our water supply and ensure our first responders are paramedics. I’ve been a voice for San Bruno in Sacramento, advocating to maintain local control over development. San Bruno is positioned on the crest of the most exciting chapter in our city’s history. We are building a new recreation aquatic center, the first major community facility in 30 years. We are looking forward to the development of the YouTube Google Bay Hill campus and revitalizing our downtown as envisioned in the transportation quarter plan. We will be implementing our Semitaeo Avenue Streetscape Plan and the Downtown Parking Management Plan. My leadership and experience are essential to ensure that our quality of life is protected and enhanced as we proceed with these projects. We also face challenges: finding the means to build a new library community center, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, eliminating our street litter, managing traffic congestion, dealing with housing concerns, and identifying compassionate ways to help homeless children and adults in our community. U.S. Congresswoman Jackie Speer says, “Irene’s knowledge, experience, and passion for San Bruno are key to meeting these challenges.” I invite you to my website to learn more about me, www.votforocconnell.com, and that I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next closing statement is Linda Mason.
So I started the night with an important question. Have I gotten a return on my investment? And if not, is it time to diversify that investment? Elections determine who is in power, but they do not determine how power is used, said Paul Coelho. Development is necessary for the sustainability of the city, but it needs to be thoughtful, considering the community that is in place. What I bring to the table is a strong work ethic and professional experience that will contribute to the city. But just as important is a vision of a future San Bruno that includes an aquatic center with a timeline for completion within budget, that allows my now-three-year-old son to swim in the indoor pool before he’s a teenager, a community room where we can celebrate 70th, 80th, and 90th birthday celebrations with family and friends. I offer you a vision of at least one high-end hotel built that will bring the city revenue and provide prevailing wage jobs to those who work in the hotel and those who are building the hotel. I offer you a vision of a library that provides conference rooms, adult and child programming, and so much more. I offer you an advocate for the creation of a master civic center plan that we don’t currently have but do need as our main buildings are deteriorating and are in need of some TLC. Lastly, I offer you a vision of a revitalized downtown where live music, art, restaurants, festivals bring San Bruno residents to the forefront and epicenter of our city. Am I an idealist? Yes. Am I practical? To a fault. Am I refreshing? I hope so. While I know that these items will not happen overnight, most are already included in the city’s 10-year general plan, and it’s been 10 years. Have you gotten a return on your investment? And if not, maybe it’s time to diversify your investment. I humbly request one of your two votes this election season. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Stephen Marshall.
So this is our third candidate’s forum, at least that I’ve participated in, and it was brought to my attention that in each of my closing statements, I have failed to actually ask for your vote. Now, that doesn’t surprise me because I’m a quiet, reserved, humble guy, but this process continues to force me to go outside of my comfort zone. So I’m here tonight to respectfully and humbly ask for your vote. The last several years, a very vocal minority has emerged through various platforms that project negativity and political hate and discourages anyone with different opinions from getting involved due to fear of personal attacks. We need leadership that will ensure a safe and inclusive process. We need leaders that will present positive solutions rather than harp on negative problems. We need leaders who will embrace change and growth and that have the courage to make difficult decisions for the betterment of our city as a whole. I am that person. I have built my business by conquering challenges, creating relationships, and having strong negotiation skills. The time is now to create a vision and strategy that builds on our past and directs us towards a future that serves this great community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. You can find additional information about the candidates on the League’s Smart Voter website, votersedge.org. All the candidates have been invited to enter their information and link to their own websites. I’d like to thank our sponsor, the city of San Bruno, Melissa Thurman, the city clerk, and her team. They did all the logistics. We just bring the talent here. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, and membership is open to both men and women of voting age. If you are interested in helping your community with forums such as this or other activities that encourage civic education and involvement, brochures are available at the back of the room with information about joining the League. Remember to vote by November 5, and encourage others to vote as well. Now, in conclusion, join me in applauding and thanking the candidates for coming this evening and running for a seat on the San Bruno City Council.